All right, I'm gonna call the, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. All right, this is the Thursday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular Village Board Meeting. Um, uh, let's, I'll call the meeting to order, let's have a roll call, please.
All right, we'll begin roll call. Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listener.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Underdunk.
Here.
Trustee Ruben.
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
We have a forum.
Okay, um, we're live streaming this meeting, we've posted the links to the livestream on the Village's social media pages, we'll make the recording, thank you, uh, we'll make the recording available and that will be on the recording, uh, on the Village's YouTube channel following the conclusion of tonight's meeting. The first item of business is consideration of minutes, uh, we circulated the minutes for the regular meeting on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, um, unless there are any comments, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
If I'm one typo, I don't know if it's really important, but anyway, it's on page two A, it was my report on the Plan Commission, we'd actually met January twenty-third, it says February twenty-fourth.
We will.
We can call it a scribbler's error, you can approve and we'll, we'll be able to address that.
Okay.
Okay, with that correction, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
There's all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, the minutes are approved. The next item, uh, on the agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting allows for those in attendance to address the board on non-agenda items, um, if you have a comment on an agenda item, uh, you can do that when we get to that item on the agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and I'll notify you when your time is up. Are there any non-agenda comments? Okay, there aren't. The next item on the agenda is the reports of committees, um, and the first committee is the Committee of the Whole, we just had that meeting and we talked about three things. The first was renewal of the licensing agreement with the Guild Hall for their streetery, uh, and the sense was that we're gonna, um, re-license for another year. The second, uh, discussion was regarding the Village's pilot program for family care leave, uh, that was successful for two years and, um, it's, we're gonna put it on the agenda to make that a permanent program, uh, and we're looking at increasing the leave time period from six weeks to eight weeks. The last item on the agenda was a report and recommendations of the gasoline-powered leaf blower working group, um, we got a report from the village manager and from the, uh, head of the Sustainability Task Force about a consortium of all the villages, uh, on the North Shore, uh, and the recommendation is to phase in a program to, uh, reduce gasoline-powered leaf blowers in the first instance, starting in, uh, twenty twenty-four by limiting gasoline-powered leaf blowers to April and then for the fall cleanup with a goal towards reducing gasoline-powered leaf blowers even more in the future. In addition, uh, one of our trustees suggested and we're gonna, where the Sustainability Task Force will look at this, um, uh, for other things we can do to reduce the use of gasoline leaf blowers and to mitigate the, uh, harm to both our employees and the environment from those as we go forward. That was the, um, uh, the Committee of the Whole. The next report is the Finance Committee, Trustee Vrie.
Um, yep, we move, we're, thanks, we met on Tuesday, um, had a short meeting, went through the village finance, the monthly village finances through the first two months of the year, um, the village finances are in good shape. Uh, the timing of property tax receipts is still sort of off for a little bit, um, I, I think we're still unexpected as to when we receive things, but we expect to receive the full amount through the year. Um, and then we also went through our normal community investment program, um, and have our, our standard schedule of new projects. That was the meeting.
Thanks for that report. The next report is the Plan Commission, Trustee Listener.
Yes, um, in February's plan, discussion of comprehensive plan, big ideas, um, they are to build like character, increase stability, they pay, uh, billions, therefore support the community and deliver excellence in planning, and, um, so we worked on these ideas which are the guidance framework for the plan and then we're going to associate it with all these big ideas, um, and what we are doing this Saturday is having, um, an open house at the library from here until that morning, um, for the community to come, so we'd like to get maybe his reaction to the comprehensive plan and the big ideas that we've been dealing with, we're going to have members of our staff, uh, Tesco is our planner, their, their people will be there, Plan Commission members, and you are all invited to attend and participate because you really are looking for feedback and making sure that we're headed in the right direction. Um, and we're gonna meet again on Wednesday, we'll, we'll continue to finalize these big ideas and then we're going to talk about the next steps, which is really developing the implementation strategy, the big ideas and the goals, and then focusing on some small area groups we're going to look at, we need a corridor, probably woods area, downtown Glencoe, and how I would approach it, so we've got a lot to learn.
Thanks for that report. Um, next report is the Golf Advisory Committee and our representative, I'm Adam, it's not much about the golf.
No, but we're opening on March twenty-fourth, so hopefully we'll have a lot more to talk about soon. Open kitchens is the new, is the new vendor for the golf course, they're gonna be ready for business on April one, you can see the menu on the website, um, offering a lot of, you know, food, uh, very golf-friendly food to stay after, uh, after around the golf, including appetizers and salads and typical golf-type fare. Preseason senior membership cards have doubled the budget of revenues here today, which is a real positive. Uh, we're, obviously, I just mentioned, we're opening on, uh, March twenty-fourth, it'll be walking only until the ground firms up enough to have power carts, so come play. And then the Golf Advisory Committee meeting is scheduled for this Monday, March twentieth, at the golf course.
Next report is Sustainability Task Force, question, may I refer to our representative?
Yes, we met, uh, the Sustainability Task Force met on February twenty-eighth to advance their mission to make Glencoe the most desirable and sustainable community in the galaxy. And we have made some steps, uh, doing that, uh, as, as we heard earlier, the Sustainability Task Force has been, uh, a leading force in the reduction of gas-powered leaf blowers. Uh, we are also working towards our recycle and reuse day, which is coming out July, sorry, June third, Jeff, is that right, June third? Uh, so please, everybody, uh, start to prepare your, uh, materials for reuse and recycling so that you don't have to landfill them, right? So we have, everybody's clear, we have a day where you can come and put things out, uh, bring things to the, um, recycle day, which is gonna be by the train station, June third, so that they don't end up in the landfill and they have a good second life. That helps that our, our ecology environment and carbon emissions in many different ways. And, uh, also, our task force took a tour of the Groot recycling facility, advancing our knowledge of the, uh, recycling process so that we can better, uh, and continue to educate our residents on how to recycle properly. And also, by the way, the village gets, um, paid for the recycling that we do do properly. So there's a direct, um, economic benefit back to the village under our current contract to do that. So it's, it is very important that we educate our residents on how to recycle for, for multiple reasons. Uh, our next meeting is Tuesday next week, Jeff, is that right, Tuesday next week? Uh, so cancel whatever plans you might have and attend Tuesday at seven here in Village Hall and participate in this really important mission and helping the really hard-working volunteers that we have in Glencoe. That's my report, President, thank you very much.
Thanks for that report. It is, I'm the Council for Sustainability Committee and our representative, I'm Adam, Trustee Ruben.
Uh, thank you, uh, we met on March first, as we do meet every, uh, the first Wednesday of every month. We continued to plan for events later this year and more on those as the planning progresses, but I do want to mention in particular that, um, you know, the second Sunday of the month, we're at the library in the afternoons, uh, and folks have been coming to talk to us, which is nice. Um, and we spent, uh, some, quite a bit of time talking about organizational work and, uh, whether certain types of projects do or don't fit within the mission and if they do fit within the mission, are we really the ones to do it? Or, uh, and this is where we could perhaps have a good multiplier effect, are we the ones to help facilitate it by bringing other groups in that are more apt and able to take on certain projects that we think would be a wonderful idea, we'd like to see, but really aren't in our bailiwick directly? So it was a very productive meeting and again, we meet the first Wednesday of every month and I invite everyone to attend.
Thanks for that report. Um, next report is Preservation Commission, our representative, I'm Adam, Trustee Ruben.
Thank you very much. Uh, the Preservation Commission, uh, did not meet on March seventh, March seventh due to the lack of a quorum, uh, they are continuing to, um, refine their recommendations to the Village Board and will be coming, uh, to you in the near future with some additional recommendations. Um, they also have made some recommendations for the comprehensive plan, uh, things especially that relate to community character are important for the community and we look forward to the community survey that will be asking questions related to that in the near future. Uh, we also had no new applications for demolition permits in the last month and we, uh, hope everyone can make it again to the All-In Glencoe Comprehensive Plan Get Together at nine AM on Saturday in the library. It's a chance for, uh, everyone in the community to, uh, state their preferences for the future. Thank you very much.
Uh, thanks for that report. Um, that concludes the reports of committees, so now we get to what, based on the audience, is the main event tonight, uh, reports of officers and the village manager's report and let's get to the main event.
Thank you, Mr. President, good evening, everyone. Yes, the first item on the village manager's report is, uh, swearing-in ceremony this evening for Lieutenant Leverance. Um, I'm gonna ask that Chief Lewandowski do a brief introduction and I just wanna make a point that this is the safest room I've ever been in, I think, so that makes me feel good.
It's the safest room I've been in since I worked at the FBI. They have more outside security.
Okay, good evening, uh, thank you, Mr. President, trustees, chief of Public Safety Director, Major Miles Cole, one of our public safety officers tonight, Andrew Leverance.
Which is which? Oh.
Lieutenant Leverance is accompanied tonight by his wife Stephanie, his son Brayden, his parents John and Susan, and Zinwas, Dan and Eileen, and Jim and Vicki, it looks like a couple of people who were in there. Thank you for being here tonight, supporting Andrew Leverance, I'm the new leadership of our department. Officer Leverance was appointed to public safety superintendent on February twenty-seventh and he is presently assigned as a police night shift supervisor. Andrew began his career in Glencoe as a public safety officer in September twenty-eight of twenty fourteen. In addition to being a fully cross-trained public safety officer, Andrew has served as juvenile officer, evidence technician, school resource officer, field training officer, EMT, advanced firefighter, and fire ref rep since then. He also serves as a tactical emergency medical technician for night squad teams since twenty twenty-one. Andrew also served in the Army National Guard for eight years while working in Glencoe. He was honorably discharged in twenty twenty-one at the Marine Corps. Over the course of his career, Andrew has earned respect of his fellow officers as well as super trainers. Andrew's training and experience, as well as his ability to work with others, have been involved in this opportunity to lead and empower the next generation of public safety officers. I'm confident that he will transition into the role and become a Village member of the Command Staff Group. Congratulations, Andrew, I look forward to working with you as you take on your next step towards what will certainly be a very great career here in Glencoe. Thank you for all that you do for this department and community.
Mr. President, we know it means a lot to you. I hope you can raise your hand if you're happy. You can always do this, no one can see your face, so, as you practice everybody, so we're gonna move you. Would you please raise your right hand for the, uh, night safety.
Hi, Andrew Leverance. Do you solemnly swear? Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States? That I will support the Constitution of the United States? The Constitution of the State of Illinois? The Constitution of the State of the World? The ordinances of the Village of Glencoe? The ordinances of the Village of Glencoe? That I will faithfully discharge? That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of public safety detective? The duties of the public safety detective? According to the best of my own court of justice?
Well, before we let you out of the room, I just wanna make mention of how grateful we are that you've stepped into this role, that you've taken on this leadership opportunity in this department, that you've continued to be, um, a star student of our, of our department and, uh, that I know a wonderful ambassador outside of and inside of Glencoe and look forward to a long, productive career here with us and thank you for everything that you do. And thank you to your family for loaning him to us, um, every day, we do tru- truly appreciate it and it's nice to see everyone's smiling faces.
Even nights.
Even nights, yes. Thank you all. I don't have any good room-clearing jokes, so I'll just wait. I understand that, I, I get it, I do. We should have, let's have a, an employee's child at every board meeting? We've got a lot of them, I'll tell ya. All right, well, I have, I have a few other brief items, uh, on my report this evening that I wanted to share, um, and then I'll, I will get out of the way of the progress of this meeting, but the first relates, excuse me, to, um, our community survey. So the Village's twenty twenty-three Community Satisfaction Survey has arrived, uh, it was last conducted in twenty nineteen and this survey is going to be used to help measure satisfaction with the Village's core services as well as to gain feedback on special projects and initiatives, uh, that are important to the board and staff. Uh, the survey is on its way to your mailbox, um, over sometime in the next few days, we expect, um, and we're asking that all households here in Glencoe complete the survey. Uh, there are two ways to do so, you can either fill out the hard copy, uh, survey that you'll receive in the mail, uh, there is a return envelope that's included, or if you're really anxious and you wanna get a head start on it, you can go to the Village's website, um, there is a link to get you to, um, to the online version of that survey, uh, or you can navigate straight to villageofglencosurvey.org. We've got information on that survey as well as the twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen surveys, the last time we did this. Uh, we'll be sharing the results of the survey, uh, in May, um, and again, encourage everyone in the community to please, uh, fill that out, we always get really great response rates, but, you know, it's something to be said for anything less than a hundred's not that great, so let's get a hundred percent response on that. Uh, if there are questions, certainly reach out to my office, um, our, our third-party survey administrator, ETC Institute, is also available with questions and we have phone numbers, uh, available on the Village's website. Last few months, we've been talking about lead service lines and, um, following the board's action last month to create a lead service line replacement program, staff has been working to finalize all the information for that program, uh, it's now been uploaded to the Village's website at villageofglencoe.org backslash lead service line, very witty, I think, in how we picked that out. Uh, we are reaching out by direct mail letter to all households with a known lead service line, uh, before the end of this month and letters to those eligible for a partial reimbursement from work completed in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two will be mailed in early April. Uh, we do have, uh, staff available to answer questions when those letters, uh, arrive in mailboxes, our water distribution supervisor Frank Coletti is one of them, as well as management analyst in the Public Works Department, Jeff Maudsley, uh, so all of that information is readily available on our website, so please do check that out. Uh, it is vehicle and pet license season, so vehicle license renewal materials were mailed out, uh, earlier in March and everyone should have received them by now, if you haven't, please reach out to the Finance Department. Uh, we are encouraging folks to update their information and purchase those licenses online, it's the easiest and fastest way to do so, the, the stickers will be mailed out to you, but of course, you can drop off, uh, applications here at Village Hall or in the white mailbox, uh, outside on Village Court. Uh, just as a reminder, new vehicle stickers need to be displayed by May first, um, otherwise you may incur a fifty-dollar late fee, uh, so, um, rush to Village Hall and get those, it's a, a great new design this year, uh, it's actually our Council for Inclusion and Communities logo, um, with the Glencoe welcomes messaging. And I just wanted to mention a couple of upcoming events, um, third time's the charm, so I'm gonna say it too, Saturday, nine to eleven AM at the Glencoe Public Library, come, share your thoughts, get a cup of coffee and learn a little bit about the comprehensive planning process, um, I'll be there, a number of others will be there who are sitting up here tonight, um, and we look forward to, to seeing the community, uh, share their thoughts, it's obviously not your only opportunity to do so, but, but we do like to see people in person if we can. Uh, Lake Shore Recycling Systems will begin curb-side yard waste and food scrap collection program again on April fifth, uh, and that'll continue every Wednesday until December. Um, Trustee Mulvaney mentioned, uh, Donate and Recycle Drop Off Day, which is June third from ten to one PM, uh, excuse, ten AM to one PM, excuse me, uh, and then everything that's not donated to, uh, that Donate and Recycle Drop Off Event, uh, can be, uh, placed at the curb, uh, for LRS's annual cleanup day, which is Saturday, June tenth, it's a little later this year than it has been in the past, we'll be getting that information out on that program soon. Uh, in addition, on June tenth, we also will be hosting an electronics recycling and paper shredding event, so more information will be available on all of these programs as we get closer, but I like to put them in my calendar, so I thought maybe others might as well. Uh, that's all I have for my report this evening, unless there are any questions.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Uh, that takes us to the Village President's Report, I only have a couple of items, one is consideration of a proclamation declaring March twenty twenty-three as Women's History Month in Glencoe. We've circulated, uh, the proclamation to the Village Board, it's been published online. Unless there are any questions, is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, I think we can do this with a vo- voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the other item is, um, I learned recently, uh, that Richard Coats, um, who was a former village trustee, he served from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen eighty-three, uh, recently passed away. He was a lifelong Glencoe resident, he was a successful, uh, corporate and securities lawyer, um, and he served on, uh, a number of not-for-profit boards as well in addition to the Glencoe Village Board. I knew Dick, he was smart and funny, um, and, and provided a lot of advice to me when I was first on the board, um, and so, uh, I just wanna pass to say, the Village of Glencoe is grateful for his service and I, I wanna pass along on behalf of the village, uh, our condolences to his wife Debbie and their children and grandchildren. Um, and that's, that is the Village President's Report. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes items that have been published online for the community to see and they've been reviewed as well, uh, by the board members. We don't think they require further discussion, so unless anyone disagrees, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
I think we need a, a roll call vote on this.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener. Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk. Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Uh, the motion carries, okay, the next item on the agenda is regular business and the first item is consideration of an ordinance amending the comprehensive fee and fine schedule to increase the number of Class B-three liquor licenses for the Glencoe Park District and I'll ask, uh, Assistant of the Village Manager, John Pape, to present. John.
Thank you, President Rowan, um, tonight before you this evening, um, are two items, seven A and seven B, both, uh, liquor license allowances, uh, and also both B-three liquor licenses, uh, the procedure that we'll go through tonight is the same, but we'll take them one at a time, cause there's, uh, a couple of differences. The first one for the Glencoe Park District, um, the process that we're doing here tonight, just as a reminder, is that the liquor code, uh, requires that we, each time we issue a new license, we create it in the ordinance, that's, uh, that's so that there is the same amount allowed in the ordinance and in the village code as are actually in use and, uh, when one, um, when a business closes or, or she fails to renew their liquor license, that number goes away automatically, uh, and that's kept in the Village's fee and fine schedule, so here before you tonight would be, um, you know, the action to create an ordinance for the purpose of this use. Um, you'll remember last year in April, um, we came to you guys with the recommendation to, uh, change the Village's liquor code to allow for B-three, which used to just be for municipally-owned golf courses, to be for any governmental facility, we did that in mind with the Glencoe Park District and this one that's before you guys tonight. The purpose of that is that the Glencoe Park District is a frequenter, frequent flyer for temporary liquor licenses, they have many events in the year that they have liquor for, uh, just administratively and also procedurally, this is a cleaner way to do it, um, so we, we cleaned that up last year, through the twenty twenty-two summer, they did still apply for and hold temporary liquor licenses as they were kind of already in the middle of their event season when we made this change, but they've come back here in twenty twenty-three ready to gear up for this event season and apply for a liquor license that will carry them through all of those events, uh, so that is what this is for you tonight. Prior to issuance, the liquor commissioner, who's also the village president, uh, make sure that all of the, uh, documents are ordered through staff, so we ensure that the background checks are completed, that all application requirements for liquor license are completed, um, and then it's issued, this procedure here would, um, that's the case for the Glencoe Park District, their application is complete, but this procedure here would be, um, the village board taking action to increase that number in the Village's fee and fine schedule to allow for the Glencoe Park District.
Second.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk. Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries, Park District, Bill Walker. Okay, John, uh...
Yeah, seven B is the Open Kitchens, uh, which is the new vendor at the golf club, so the previous vendor, uh, held a liquor license under the same, same B-three code, but again, they, we, they closed, their liquor license goes away because they didn't renew it, that number goes back to zero, we're now adding one for the new use here, so, um, just, uh, a slight difference with this, just with the timing of the village board meetings and where they are in their application, their application is nearly complete, but not quite yet, so the difference in this recommendation is that we're asking the village board to approve the authorization of that B-three liquor license and have the issuance of it dependent upon the completion of that application, um, a meeting with the liquor commissioner and then the, give the liquor commissioner the authority to issue that license once those steps are completed, just in the interest of timing here with the Village B3 liquor license, and have the issuance of it dependent upon the completion of that application, um, a meeting with the liquor commissioner, and then the, give the liquor commissioner the authority to issue that license once those steps are completed, just in the interest of timing here with the village board meeting and not needing to wait till next month. So, um, that would be what we'd ask you to do here.
We don't want to leave. So we got second class. We're hoping they're open.
I'm hoping they're open, so.
Is there, unless there are questions, a motion to create the liquor license for Open Kitchens?
Well, well, that's...
They would, the license is created, but they don't get it until it's issued. Is there a motion to create the liquor license?
Motion to create the liquor license.
There's a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
Uh, the motion carries, and that liquor license is created as well.
Thank you.
Um, thanks, John. Um, next, uh, that concludes the regular business. The next item is other business, village manager, Crowley.
Yeah, I just wanted to make mention, uh, on tonight's agenda are some significant capital projects that are gonna be undertaken this year, and I, I first wanted to just make mention that one of them, the Cribwall Project, is a cooperative effort between the village and the park district and is, uh, being able to, to happen because of a large grant from the state of Illinois. Um, we are working hard, um, together to make that project come to fruition, and it's exciting to be able to do so together with one of our community partners. I also just want to acknowledge in the audience today, uh, James Teague, who's our village engineer. Many of you have seen his name often. You may not have seen him, but he's here, uh, mostly because James is gonna be, uh, handling, uh, the vast majority of our capital projects this summer, um, and, uh, he's very capable of doing so, but, uh, I just want to thank him in advance of the work that we are gonna undertake this year as a community, uh, 'cause it's gonna, it's gonna be pretty transformational in a lot of areas. So just wanted to say that to James. That's all I have.
All right, so that, the other business, is there a...
I had, I had other business.
Oh.
Sorry. Three things I want to get out there. Um, one is, I would like the board at some point to consider limiting the number of concurrent seats that are single-pointed, or, uh, seats on committees that are single-pointed, like, too much helpful in the poll, um, here in Glencoe. So in other words, uh, somehow you can not allow three or four members from one house to have different positions. Uh, I think that's worth discussing, maybe not right now, but, um, because Andrew and I have brought this up over the years, and, uh, we've yet to have a discussion of the board, so I would like to, to see how people feel about it. The second item I wanted to get out there was, um, again, I bring up my quote, Orietta and staying in the park, there's, uh, a recent review, they have, uh, a quote, uh, Orietta and community, I know we're not gonna resolve it, but I'm just, uh, no, that's not a, a plan, they just said, oh, that's a good one. Uh, and third, um, third was, at one point, we, we talked about signage and art, I don't remember what happened on that, um, discussion, and I don't, I don't remember, but, uh, if we didn't resolve that, it would be great to bring that back, uh, to the board and discuss that, that, I think it was a federal watch or something like that, that redefine, uh, what is, uh, maybe on a, a message which is assigned with the...
Yeah, that was a discussion, I, I think, a summer and a half ago, um, relative to murals, and...
We amended our or, our sidewalk.
We, we did, we did, and, um, I think there are, uh, we, at the time, the board intended it, as, if I, if memory serves, to not move forward with, uh, a regulatory structure around murals, um, and, uh, so that kind of remains an open issue.
I'm trying to remember. Yeah. Could I, and let me, um, I, I do not, of course, speak for the rest of the board on the public floor. Uh, for me, I am hopelessly unqualified to weigh in on a public floor. Uh, I, and I think, which is not saying, you know, the United States has one, I'm not sure which president is qualified to, to, uh, but it could be that the library board, which is about that subject, would be a better place to raise public floor that maybe, so, uh, what I would suggest is, um, take the library board, that's what, that might be what we do. Uh, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I just, you know, we're picking one, and it ought to be somebody that knows, uh, any other... Okay, uh, the next item is, uh, we're gonna have a closed session tonight, uh, and it's, uh, 2C21, approval of closed session minutes, and 2C1, employment matters. Uh, is there a motion to move closed session for those two things?
A move.
The second.
Second.
Roll call.